We have this.
Hey Jim, you did plug it in and the flashlight?
Yeah, it's on, it's recording.
Yeah, he tested it.
Yeah, yeah, this is going to, so, yeah.
All right, we all set? Thank you Kim and thank you Janet. Okay, okay, I'd like to call our meeting. It is August 19th, 2025, 7:00 PM. I apologize, we had technical difficulties, but I think we at least have one screen up. So, roll call.
Trustee Benetti?
Here.
Trustee Botner?
Here.
Trustee Burson?
Here.
Trustee Hopfensberger?
Here.
Trustee Millet? Absent. Trustee Mur?
Here.
President Wunicki?
Present.
We also have the village administrator, police chief Levand, and attorney Forte.
All right, please rise for the pledge. And Nick, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we have public comment. I'm going to turn it over to our council, Carmen, and he'll take over from here.
Thank you, President Wunicki. First off, there were not enough forms to sign in for public comments, so if you do have public comment, after those who have signed up and have spoken, if you could just raise your hand and everyone can come one at a time up to the podium, if you could just state your name and address for the record or for the for the minutes, there's no need to fill anything else out. And then secondly, the chair has the discretion to move public comment throughout the meeting from its current spot, either in whole or in part. What we'd like to do tonight is to take all general public comments now, before the consent agenda, but any comments relating to, that would be item 7B, which is the proposed special use at 42 West 240 Campton Hills Road, we're going to hold to the time of that that item later on in the meeting. That way you don't feel that you have to make a comment now, you make it later on in the meeting. So with that, I-
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, and as many of you who were likely at the public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission recall, there was not a limit on the time for public comment because it was a public hearing at that time. That public hearing has closed, and is now proceeded to the village board level, which is where we are tonight. Tonight is just for discussion. The village board will not be taking any formal action. As you know, there's no ordinance on on the village board's agenda that will require a vote. So this is only within the confines of discussion, this is a village board meeting. So public comments tonight on that that particular item and any other item will be limited to the board's rules for public comments. So three minutes per individual, to be extended at the discretion of the chair. For any topics, remain to the business of this public body, which is the village board. We encourage no repetitive comments. Obviously, if you've heard what you're planning to say, heard by someone else, don't feel the need that you have to say it, but you certainly have the right to. And with that, I think we can move on to public comment.
Okay, I'll take the public comments, not related to-
Correct.
Okay, are there any speakers for a public comment that's not related to the Headwaters-Montessori School? It's on a different issue. Anybody here want to speak on a different issue? Okay, we will move on. We'll move to number four, consent agenda. Any items to remove from the consent agenda? Janet?
4D.
4D? Okay. Anything else? Okay, I'll accept a motion to move the consent agenda with the exception of 4D.
So moved.
Moved by Janet, seconded by Frank. Roll call.
Trustee Benetti?
Aye.
Trustee Botner?
Aye.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee Hopfensberger?
Aye.
Trustee Millet is absent. Trustee Mur?
Aye.
Okay, let's see, 4D? Janet?
I have no problems with the issue. I just wanted to make it clear, because it doesn't say on the agenda for any casual observers, that this is a release of with the developer of Norton Lakes. After, of course, we've had a series of meetings, a series of negotiations and actions, and that has all worked out well, I think, for the village and the residents. And so I want to make sure that everyone understood that's what that's what this is, because it sounds a little generic.
Mm-hmm.
So other than that, I have no problems with it.
All right, thank you Janet. Mark, go ahead.
I think we should have, we should have the attorney explain. He fixed part of the agreement that I was reluctant or negligent on making clear, and Carmen did a good catch, and attorney for the developers agreed to that change. Essentially, the indemnification was too broad, because we maintained the letter of credit for one year. And the way it was written, it was like exempting him from any future claims completely, but that would undo the letter of credit being maintained for a year. And Carmen caught that and sent that correction around. And I just want to say that was, I didn't catch that initially, and Carmen took care of it.
Yes, along the chart of it, that copy of the agreement that was a previous draft was erroneously placed on the packet for approval this evening. The current version was just recently distributed to the board, and that removes essentially all of section three regarding hold harmless and indemnification of the developer. It just simply reduces the letter of credit to 45%. Everything else remains the same, so.
Okay, and for the public who do not know where Norton Lakes is located, it's contiguous to Fox Mill, and it's just east of Fox Mill, just for your information. And it was a new development.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead Frank.
This didn't really address the agreement with Hank and Norton Lakes, so is that like next steps on-
That's a separate agreement that they actually have, that's already been ironed out between the two of them, and I believe executed.
They were, the lawyer for Hank, Dirk Price with Ansel Blink, has a separate agreement release with their HOA, and their HOA lawyer has been on vacation and not signed off on it. That's why they didn't receive the $100,000 that the village helped them get out of the developer for the aerator and all the things with the irrigation, et cetera. So that is, we take our action, and within five days, they also said they will turn over that check separately for the HOA.
All good? Okay, roll call.
Need a motion now.
We need a motion.
I move to pass item 4D.
Okay, and second to that motion, Kim? Okay, roll call.
Trustee Benetti?
Aye.
Trustee Botner?
Aye.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee Hopfensberger?
Aye.
Trustee Mur?
Aye.
Okay. I don't know. Thank you. All right, moving on to five staff reports. We have the police report. Chief Levand will give us the police report.
Thank you. Since there's a lot of comments tonight, I'll make this quick for everyone. July monthly report, 405 calls for service, nine accidents, 66 citations, three arrests, including a DUI injury crash. National Night Out, National Night Out was a huge success, as usually it is. We had beautiful weather. I'd like to thank, I saw many people, I saw trustees, village president, administrator there. Roughly about 3,000 people attended, which is usually what we average. Once again, we got rave reviews from everyone in Kane County about how great it is, and it was a great time. But I just want to give a big thank you to Community Relations Committee, and then Officer Sina Stavi for all her work in putting it together. They did a great job. New school year has started. Department took part in both back-to-school days at Wasco and Bel Graham, welcoming the students and staff back to school. The district has made some good security upgrades over the summer, including new entries into the school. That includes key swipe cards and new security cameras. So kudos to the district for looking out for security and safety. Last two weeks, the department assisted with traffic control and two different fundraising events. One was the Tour de Cure Bicycle Fundraiser, which had over 400 bicycles that went through town. And then this past Sunday, we took part in the Corporal Kyle Moser fundraiser, which he was a Marine that was serving overseas and was seriously injured by an AED explosion. So we were happy to take part in that. Myself and the Fire and Police Commission are currently in the process of interviewing for open sergeant vacancies. Everyone took part that was eligible in the written test. Those that did pass that have now went on to the interviews. This morning, we had three. Thursday, we have three more. And then hopefully by September, we'll have a list established for any open vacancies for that. And that's all I have, unless there's any questions.
All right, any comments or questions for Chief? And thank you for all the work you did for National Night Out as well. It was, yeah, it was a huge success. All right. Thank the hot dog guy. The free, the free hot dogs. I know he does. All right, we'll move on to B Finance, and we have our treasurer, Timothy McPhillips is here.
Okay, all the trustees have received the memo, hopefully, and the three-month, year-to-date financial statements. There really isn't much to report here, considering we are only 25% through the year. I will just highlight some of the variances that I also included in the memo. With 25% of the year in, we've already received 31.2% of the budgeted revenue. So that's a favorable variance. But keep in mind that there are some revenue streams that we get very early in the year, and we don't get any additional revenue later in the year. So it's not surprising to see a positive variance for our overall revenue. The general fund expenditure shows a 26.3% budget amount that's slightly above the expected budgeted amount. The general administrative expenses are favorable by 18.1%. The police department is marginally over budget by 26.7%. I would attribute that to a majority of it being officers that are not out in the field yet, so we can't utilize them for patrol. And our budget was based strictly on the utilization of the patrolmen. What else can I point out? The capital fund expenditure standard 42.4%. That's obviously above expenditures anticipated, but we bought one of our biggest items, which was the squad car. We bought that very earlier in the fiscal year, so we're done with that. Anything else in there? I'm more than happy to answer any questions. I did include three other schedules. In particular, the revenues, the top revenues, month-over-month for the last two fiscal years, the police salaries for the first three years, three months, I'm sorry, and all the legal expenses by departments. If you want any other schedules for that, for the budget or the P and L, please let me know. I can create any, anything ad hoc if you'd like, or if you'd like this rearranged. But as of now, that pretty much summarizes the financial conditions of the village. Any questions?
Any questions or comments for Tim? Okay, hearing none? Thank you, we'll move on. Right, action items, we have 6A. I'm sorry, Janet?
Is this report, is it in our packet, or did we get it separately? I've not seen it in the packet. Okay, I just want to make sure that's available to the public.
Have you got it?
Thanks.
Okay. All righty, six action items. A, motion to remove from the table ordinance 25-26, adopting the Village of Campton Hills Comprehensive Plan 2025. I need a motion. Do I have a motion? To move from, move it from the table?
So this motion is just to remove from the table, so that it can be discussed further tonight. So this motion is just to remove from the table, so that it can be discussed further tonight?
Hearing none? All right.
Moving on for lack of, uh, lack of a motion.
Okay, um, therefore, we can approve six B. We'll have to move on.
Correct.
Okay. All right, we'll go to discussion items. Uh, A, Geneva School District, three oh four, development agreement. Mark, I think this is yours.
Yes, this would be, uh, the Geneva School District is just, they passed this, uh, almost three weeks ago, last night, that they agreed to six point one two five million dollars if and when the development occurs south of thirty-eight. If the village annexes it, they will get that money from the Shodine Development. And they also agreed to not object if the village creates a TIF district. It's not the same as they're going to endorse it, but having them not object is a, is a big get. And so that ties to our other item that we approved up above in the SB Friedman to analyze the viability and legality of creating a TIF. So that is something that will be included as an appendix to any public hearing that we have on the annexation. And just so the public knows, we're, we've, uh, sent it to the paper, I guess, tomorrow?
Uh, public notice will be published tomorrow.
Yes.
And mailed, it was mailed today, actually.
Yep. So that will be for September fourth for the public. And, uh, it'll be included in that document as an appendix to the annexation agreement, the school district's approval of that doc, of their agreement that is attached. And we're asking, you know, that the village, you know, authorizes, um, will authorize the village president to sign off on that at some point before the fourth of September.
Yeah, we, we didn't know that we'd have a final copy of this agreement by tonight, otherwise we would have had a resolution for this evening. Uh, it does look like it's a final copy now. There were some changes to the exhibits that the school district had to make, um, before signing it. So now that it sounds like they will probably execute it in the next couple of days, we will, uh, put it on the September second meeting with the resolution for approval, but we just wanted you to have it now, so that you could see it, in case you had any questions.
Uh, let's see, Mark, for the public, or Carmen, just briefly, just, uh, describe what a TIF is for the public?
Again, that it's tax increment financing is what the TIF stands for. And it's essentially that if it's, when it's established, the day it's inception by the village, then all the taxing bodies from the Blackberry Township to the school district and everything in between, all entities that would have a tax bill on the area that's considered the TIF, which would be between Brundage and Harley, and the south of thirty-eight, north of Kestlenger, that is part of the nine hundred and sixty-two acres of the, look, Shodine, uh, uh, request for annexation into the village, that, those acreage. And, uh, every taxing body would have their taxes froze at the year established, if that's twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six, for twenty-three years. And the increment, as it goes up in valuation by the assessor's office, that delta would be the TIF funds that would be utilized for anything that matched legally as a but-for the TIF, that we would expend any of those revenues generated. Say for the example, we had that letter from the Water Reclamation District saying that they could not accept nine hundred units because they don't have capacity. It would help defray that cost, because that would be potentially an eligible cost for the TIF dollars to be utilized to, you know, enhance their treatment facility, so it could meet that kind of demand, for example. And very honestly, that's what we talked about with the school district and why they were agreement. That, and if we do annex it, the village needs to know in transparency. We've discussed this at the board. The Harley Road would become the village's responsibility, pretty much from thirty-eight to Kestlenger. Therefore, there's a bridge that goes over the railroad track. It's due for maintenance that could cost, it was going to cost Blackberry Township, but when we annex it, it'll be the village's responsibility to anywhere from slightly less than two million dollars if it's a five percent cost share, or if it's ten percent, it could be double, could be up to four million. That would also be a TIF-eligible expense. So when it come out of village funding, it would be something that'd be eligible for the TIF. So that's kind of the two purpose reasons for creating the TIF, is the Water Reclamation District is anywhere from ten to twenty million in estimated cost. So those dollars each year, as a seven hundred or eight hundred thousand dollar house is put instead of farmland that's at four cents per, what is it, four cents per hundred, or by ten thousand? So it'd be a significant increment that will be generated, and that will be the funds then to meet the but-for test. That's the purpose of the TIF.
Okay. Any questions from the board or comments? Okay, thank you, Mark. Uh, all right, we'll move on to discussion items B. Special use for school in a residential zoning district at forty-two W four two zero Campton Hills Road. And, uh, we'll accept public comment for, uh, seven B. So does anybody want to speak on this? You want the presentation first?
I think that would be better.
All right, who's, who's doing the presentation? Uh, I got it, okay.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Hal Frank. I'm an attorney with Headwaters Academy. I assist the Headwaters Academy at the planning and commission public hearing, and we're pleased to now appear before you. And we understand that there's no bulk schedule.
Correct.
We understand that. Um, so, um, with me this evening is Sarah Elliott, who is the executive director of Headwaters Academy. And, uh, what, our plan was to this evening, and I appreciate the technical support you received to make this possible. We have a PowerPoint which is similar, but slightly different than the PowerPoint presentation that we had for the PZC public hearing. And sort of an overview, we're going to walk through, there's some changes, some differences from the other PowerPoints. Uh, we scaled it back a little bit, but then we also added in some things, but nothing we added in is anything we haven't seen already in the public. We've taken portions of the letter that I sent you, and we've now incorporated that into the PowerPoint in case, uh, people in the audience have not yet seen the agenda packet and had an opportunity to, uh, you know, to hear our responses to some of the comments that were made at the public here. So again, just as an overview, Sarah's going to talk a little bit about the academy and the property and all that. Uh, and then I'm going to address some of the public comments that we talked about, uh, or that we heard at the planning and commission. And at that public hearing at the end, we did it all night, and at the end, we did not respond to any of the public comments. So as you saw in my letter, I selected, covered the high-level observations and comments of neighbors that are concerned about this proposal. And we certainly understand those concerns and appreciate them. And then at the end of this presentation, um, uh, we have some, uh, I summarized some conditions of approval. As you know, under zoning ordinance, there's a provision about how to assess, how to handle special use applications, and in those provisions, it's one of the things that the planning and zoning commission can recommend, and the village can do to address concerns, established conditions of the public. So we have summarized at the end of this presentation, um, those conditions of approval.
Okay, thank you.
So at that, I'm going to give you a little bit of text.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, we have to turn the mic on, I think? Thank you. Thank you, James.
Perfect. Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Hal. Um, and, and thank you to each of our trustees, our village president. I appreciate, um, the time and consideration, um, the think tank that you are in, in consideration of our application. So we've been at a few of these, and I know there's been a lot of information, so I'll try to keep this brief for who we are. I'm Sarah Elliott. I am the executive director for Headwaters Academy. I grew up in Campton Hills, went to Wasco School, Beerson Creek, on Briarwood Drive, where my parents, Dan and Sally, still live. Uh, they're coming up on fifty years at that location. So, um, we've been part of this community a very long time. Um, I spent some years away, living in other states and abroad, and came back here, met my husband, stayed on, to raise my own family in Campton Hills. From twenty twenty until this spring, I was working for the USDA, uh, the Food and Nutrition Services, um, on farm-to-school programming in the Midwest region. Um, it covers seven states in the Midwest, so think serving local food in school lunchrooms, teaching kids about nutrition education in classrooms, and learning to garden in, in their communities. And so this was at a, um, we supported the states to do this statewide initiatives. Um, we supported it through grant work, um, and I spent five years with USDA colleagues, really learning how, how these systems functioned. When the current administration changed and reduced the workforce size, my job went with it. It has allowed me to bring this knowledge set with me to this role. To be clear, I am a volunteer. I do not get paid to be an executive director. This is a passion project. This is what I want to be doing. Um, we are a fledgling organization, and we are working to create a school that meets the needs of kids, emphasizes nature, as well as farm and food literacy. When we talk about raising the next generation, we talk about educating students about how food grows, where it comes from, and so they can make better decisions for their own health and lives, and potentially engage in careers in agriculture. So while we've been going through this zoning process, we have found a temporary location, um, at Wesley United Methodist in Aurora. We are renting two classrooms from them, and we've, we've really been received with open arms, very grateful for, um, their willingness to host us. We have two teachers under contract and eighteen enrolled students, gate, grades K to eight. So the building is over, nearing a hundred years old. The classrooms are on the third floor. There is no elevator, and there is no central air conditioning. It's thirty minutes from Campton Hills, and you may be able to see why this is not a long-term solution for our students. It's very warm in there. We are still enrolling students, but our total enrollment is likely going to sit around eighteen and or not exceed twenty this year. We have had two very part-time contractors while we've been in this startup phase. Everyone else you have met in our organization is a volunteer. Or, other than I, our teachers, I'll get to that part. While we are starting our school, September second, in our temporary space, we will also be working on our community garden. The garden will be for the community of Headwaters students and families. Since the beginning, Friday has always been targeted as a day of field trips, um, learning out and about in the community instead of in classrooms. Because we cannot incorporate nature farm education Monday through Thursday, we plan to visit forest preserves, parks, and our community garden on Fridays. There will be a schedule. As community gardens are allowed on RE2 properties, we will be in compliance with zoning regulations. We also offer not to start those field trips until we've, until this has passed a vote and all zoning questions are resolved. Um, we also plan to use, uh, the restrooms located inside the existing principal structure on the property when needed, or to use it in the case of severe weather. So on the Village of Campton Hills website, it says, "Residents of the Village of Campton Hills wish to maintain the semi-rural quality of their environment and its associated lifestyle. They wish to control their own destiny, act so that property values increase over time at a rate greater than market averages, and ensure the continued excellence of schools that educate their children." This speaks exactly to what we are doing. I am a Campton Hills resident who would like to maintain our semi-rural quality of life. I do wish to control my own destiny and ensure the excellence of schools that educate our children. I'm going to flip through some of these, um, slides. So the property, um, as many of you know, is on Campton Hills Road. This just gives you an overview of where it is located, about halfway between Anderson and Town Hall. We have several, um, accessory buildings, one two-story frame house. The fence encloses approximately two-thirds of the property. There'll be a platter survey here, I think, in the next slide. The frontage of the property is three hundred and five feet, and then the, the extension from Campton Hills Road is seven hundred and twenty feet. This sort of shows you where it's situated relative to the neighbors' homes and what direction those are. So those are distances to the principal structure on the property. So this is looking as you enter, um, enter the drive off to the, you can see the house in the front. There is a split off into the accessory buildings, the barns, and that is, the fence goes in front of that and then all the way around the property. You can't see. Thank you. Next slide. Okay, this, um, we did add a semicircle, um, onto the driveway. So from here, this is on the drive, looking north towards residents. And this is a view looking north of that half-loop drive. Looking south along the east property line, and then looking northeast from the front yard towards the schoolhouse. You can't actually see the house because it is behind those trees. Um, this is headed north up the driveway towards the residence. You can see the garage is at the top. And this is looking south from the residence towards Campton Hills Road. To the west, um, from the front yard to the neighboring property. And then looking northwest. Um, this is on the front property, looking to the northwest. That's the barn on the property. So our current enrollment is at eighteen. Uh, we will cap it twenty-five for this year, but our ultimate cap, um, for subsequent years, we are capping at forty-five. Um, right now, we, we have two hired teachers. We have a part-time administrator, so if we expand, we'll be able to, um, grow that to have full coverage. We are aiming for a staff of six. There are three board members that are very active, um, in, in this also. Our hours of operation are eight to five, so teachers have time to prep before or after school, and the classroom hours are nine to three fifteen. So regular school day. So as far as on the property, there is a number of different styles of fencing that, um, and barriers that, that run the length of the property. Chain link and landscaping run the eastern side, separating the backyard from farm view. The southeastern property does have a locking iron gate that you see there in that corner. And the southwestern side is vinyl enclosure, um, fencing with a gated entry that can be locked. Uh, western and northwest fence lines feature powder-coated metal ag fencing, um, in addition to about ten foot of, um, natural barriers, trees and figgy. So we've discussed traffic considerations, and I know that some of this is available for you in the packet, but the drop-off would be, um, starting at eight forty-five, we would be available at eight forty for anybody arriving early, um, and end at nine AM, and then pickup would start at three fifteen and run until three thirty. So, um, my experience with drop-offs like this, that people, families have different styles. Some like to arrive at three fifteen on the dot, others would prefer to wait till three twenty-nine to pick up, so it doesn't all queue at the same time. Uh, we are instructing parents annually through our parent handbook on our expectations of procedures. Um, that, the, whoops, I just lost you there. Okay. Per the police chief's recommendations, we, we can and will install signage, communicating driveway use or movement limitations based on conditions. And then, like I said, we, we will ensure that this is in the annual handbook that's, that parents sign off on. Um, we consulted a traffic engineer who, who made recommendations that we are, um, of changes we are willing to make to, to better manage traffic flow. The existing driveway should be widened to twenty- The existing driveway should be widened to 20 feet at the top end of the driveway near Campeton Hills. There's another spot where the northerly edge of the traffic, of the driveway loop is also to be widened, and then bushes and trees along the north side of Campeton View, Campeton Hills Road that would limit view can be removed or trimmed for better line of sight. And then, at the access to the drive, the radii would be increased for better turning. During afternoon pickup, we can stack cars in both the inbound and the exit side, and we can fit 13 to 14 cars that way. Students would be divided into two groups for a staggered pickup, 15 to 20 minutes apart, based on families and carpooling. Parents would be informed not to arrive earlier than their designated time for the staggered, the staggered pickup. If necessary, we can also do that with the morning drop-off. And parents will be encouraged to turn right onto Campeton Hills Road when exiting the site, just for traffic. So, and I'm gonna hand it over to Hal.
Thank you, Sarah. As I said, I'd like to run through, obviously with a lot of public comments, I'm not gonna respond. I'm not gonna respond to all of them, but I selected you that I thought would be helpful to respond to. Again, this really did just a abbreviated version. Excuse me, that's in your. Excuse the question. Hey, okay, so the first public comment, substantial, was an old, it was noted by a number of speakers, was that the school itself is an appropriate property. As you know, the property is owned in the R2 residential zoning district. As we said at the hearing and in our letter, and as you know, the schools, elementary and secondary schools are considered and identified as authorized special uses, not prohibited use, but they are an authorized special use. And as we noted in the prior public hearing, the law is pretty clear that when a municipality identifies a particular use as an authorized special use in a particular district, it has already made the local legislative determination that the use is not inconsistent with the public's health, safety, morals, or welfare, and that the use is not out of conformity within the municipality's general zoning plan. And then I have that case, the Supreme, Illinois Supreme Court case from 2001, City of Chicago Heights versus William Lloyd Outwood, Outwood Church. This case involved a church that wanted to locate on a busy four-lane highway, Lincoln Highway, in Chicago Heights. The city that designated it had zoned it E2 commercial, and in their comprehensive plan, they said, you know, this is an area you clearly want to develop as a commercial quarter. The church came in, and just like we are hearing, as you think, the church came in and applied for a special use permit. His only word, based on the comprehensive plan and the village's goal to have this area developed as commercial uses, recommended with an idle discussion use permit. Then it went to the plan commission, the plan commission recommended denial of discussion use permit, and it went to the city council, and the city council denied discussion use permit. The matter ended up in court, and the Illinois Supreme Court said, "When it comes to when you identify a use as an authorized special use in a particular zoning district, the legislative determination has already been made that it's an appropriate use for that district." Now, I am putting this in this presentation this evening, but as I said in my letter, that doesn't mean every request that comes before you for a special use that's been listed has to be approved. But that is why I wanted to let you know in my letter, you still have to prove up the standards in a particular use and a particular location, that the standards are provided for your zone work. So we did that at the plan commission, planning zone commission public hearing, and I did it in my letter, but I'm not giving you that. The second major comment that I thought it would be helpful to address was the comment that was made again by more than one individual, that the public safety and health involved were pretty jeopardized by having students in such close proximity to bridle paths or horse properties. So one of the things we've done since the closing of that public hearing is we fear to give information that there are actually recorded bridle paths on the recorded class subdivision. There are two relevant class of subdivision. I have a bunch of copies that I could pass out to you, hard copies if you'd like to see them. There's the original Campeton Hill, Campeton Hills Farm subdivision from 1972, and then there was the subsequent, I think in the 90s, country, county, country view estates subdivision. Neither one of those plans of subdivision or any separate document created bridle path easements, which is what is, what I summarize here. Now, Mr. Court, the court camp got up, they are immediately to the west of the central property. They know that they have, there are bridle paths there on the property, and that they ride, who's one of them, rides the court camp, but that's his family. But those are not on the court of use, that we acknowledge, we're acknowledging that there are bridle paths there, there are horse uses there, and that that is encouraged in that by the village. But what I cited here is another case that talks about generalized and speculative fears not being an appropriate basis, and saying no to a special use. And I cited this case, this is a public court case, this is the Village of Riverwood, this is the Village of Buffalo Grove. I don't know if you're familiar with the intersection of Milwaukee Avenue and Lake Cook Road, but this is an area where, that, as you can see back in the 80s, a developer proposed the construction of two office towers on the northeast corner of Lake Cook Road and Milwaukee Avenue in this case. And the Village of Riverwood, which is a small community to the east of Buffalo Grove, put the position that, you know, putting this much traffic, putting all these users in, I think there were eight or 10-story buildings, there was a big parking that it would put an undue burden on the Village of Riverwood, it would put, it would tax their police services, and the village that can shoot, shoot, you got the doors, it's bound to develop and go forward. And in a nutshell, what the public court concluded were these fears and these theories that it was gonna cost the village more money and put the village out of money, out of business because of the construction of these two big office towers. The court said, you know, that didn't cut it as a basis for invalidating the decision of Buffalo Grove, and concluded that generalized and speculative fears, you know, are not an appropriate basis for saying no to a request for a special use. So that's why, you know, what we've said here is, you know, we appreciate the concerns of the neighbors, we think there are ways to deal with those concerns, to appropriately establish and enforce conditions, but we don't think those generalized and speculative fears that students can wander on, that these might have horses, or that lost the village or height, but we don't think those speculative fears are appropriate basis for saying no. The next comment we're addressing, in a similar vein, is this court's comment, again, immediately to the west of the property, that he has a burn, that he has a prairie on his property, that he's burned annually for 27 years, which we appreciate that, and we appreciate this concern that by putting a school next door, that it could create challenges and issues for him. Again, in the same vein, we appreciate those concerns, we think those concerns that we provided, and our proposed risks and conditions of approval that could be addressed by the Finally, you also heard from this court, you tell, information about the ecology and the environment, and the questions about the adequacy of the septic system and its ability to serve a school of use as it was proposed. This too, we believe, again, appreciate the concern, we think that could be addressed as a condition of approval, and having the village and county being satisfied that the septic system is in good condition, that it can handle what's being put there, and if not, that it can be upgraded, and it can all be analyzed before any building, on its condition, to improve the principal structure on the property. So again, I'm not gonna run through all these, I'll summarize them. These are all basically what was presented to the planning and zoning commission as potential conditions of approval, obviously compliant with applicable laws, it's already been identified by the fire protection district that if this receives this structure, we need to be sprinkled, which is not a problem. It came up at the planning and zoning commission public hearing, that the applicant would have to begin to account, satisfying the requirements of the American, Americans with disabilities act, and obviously again, it's not a problem, it's the law. You heard Sarah talk about the cap on enrollment long-term. I know that she would also be open to, as we've gotten proposed back at the planning and zoning commission public hearing, that there'll be a lookback after a year or something of operation, the village would have an ability to look back and see if some additional conditions or improvements need to be established, improvements need to be made to address traffic. I would say it's not written up here, but I know that Sarah would be open to a similar lookback on the issue of enrollment. In other words, as she indicated, the goal is to get the 25 students in this initial first full year of enrollment. I don't think she has any problem with a lookback on that, if the board, the school isn't, is allowed to go to that. If an increased level of enrollment, that the school wants to come back to you and get comfort, make sure you're comfortable that operating with 25 students does not create a problem to the neighborhood or to the neighbors. One of the things that came up there, the anonymous concern about the use of the principal structure of the school for after-hours events, we presented this in the hearing, public hearing, but the limitations on that, same thing with after-hours events, and agreement not that when the school out to kind parties, you know, weddings or fundraisers. Item number five, again, is what I was referring to, this is a new condition, this was not presented for the planning and zoning commission. This would be a condition that the board's building permits would issue, that there'd have to be a professional evaluation of the septic system and appropriate determinations that have to be made, that there'd be no adverse impact on the ecology or the environment. The village would have the right to hire the home consultants at Headwaters expense, and obviously nothing could proceed unless all permits were obtained from the community for help. You heard Sarah run through the traffic engineer recommendations, obviously, those are the conditions of approval, this is what I shared with the, and the zoning commission public hearing. Number seven is the lookback on traffic that I just mentioned. Number eight is a newly added condition, we suggested that you could add a condition that we would, that Headwaters would let all neighbors know when a burn is taking place, and stay inside if necessary, and to stay away, if, assuming that Mr. Court gave notice that the school was going to undertake that burn, and they would obviously have the neighbors who've done the, 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 the burn. The other two conditions here, the previously presented, if, Sarah showed you, all the landscaping, and dense landscaping, dense item on the property, well, we said, back at the public hearing, the village, the lady, yeah, a lookback, why, they're saying you gotta put up more fencing, change the fencing, you know, that would be acceptable too. And then finally, you, one of the other individuals asked about, I think it was actually members of the commission asked about the proportion of these conditions and the special use, and so obviously you could provide, the structure use or against it, if it were approved, would be basically part of the zoning ordinance. And so any violation of it would be considered a violation of the zoning ordinance, because I'm sure you know, the code of the gas provision would be a penalty, if we did anything violation of the zoning ordinance, or in this case, it would be a special use ordinance, would be a fine, a final condition. And you could also obviously plan, put in, it's very common to put this in, you know, approved special use permit, or according to the, but the African, that the university will, obviously, or all the classes of university. Your ordinance says that if there are conditions of approval, and if to approve special use, that everything has to be satisfied, and you gotta open the special use for business, so to speak, of the operation, within one year of the date of approval. So there are a lot of things that have to be resolved, you know, with the county, with the village, with architects, with the fire protection district, the fire protection district, there's many other issues we kinda have to deal with. So, everything would have to be resolved, and the school would have to open, operate, open its operation in this location, within one year of approval, the special use would act. So even if you approve the special use, you know, pattern conditions and whatever, that could result in the school never opening up. So that is, that was our presentation. If you would permit me, I would like to quickly run through, I need a one minute gap to show you how it works. If I could, I wanna run through a part two, as I said here, to address something that came up repeatedly at the public hearing, and it was raised both by the neighbors, residents, members of the public, and by members of the commission. And that is the issue of the existing declaration of covenants that came up repeatedly and it's interfaced with the zoning law. Again, here's, this is not the entire Campeton Hills Farm subdivision, but it's the relevant part of the Campeton Hills Farm subdivision. The bridle paths around this are in yellow. This is lots nine through 16 of the original subdivision. There's a second page, that's lots one through eight, but I don't have a good picture of it in yellow, so I have to special. This is the other subdivision. So this is lots 15 and 16. You can see that's both of the two big lots, that might write there. They got resubdivided to create the country view estate. So what you're looking at there, lot 13 is actually where Sarah and her husband live. Lot 12, I believe, is where the court's live, and lot 11 is where the court camp live. Just to put this in context, again, here is that part of the Campeton Hills Farm subdivision, and now you've got an area that shows you, again, the country view estate subdivision, and you can see the subject property. The subject property is basically the western half of what you see over there under the word unofficial, that's lot 14. And the subject property, what we're talking about tonight, is that western half. Now, here are the provisions in the declaration that have been the topic of a lot of discussion. In paragraph one, these covenants, these restrictions go back to 1972, but they're pretty old. But they have a, what, what, in words, what is called an Evergreen provision, they renew automatically after seven, 10 years. The first one, the restriction that's been, that's been at some discussion, is paragraph one says, "No trap, none of the structure located around shall be used for business or commercial purpose in such manner as to cause knock disorders or create annoyance or nuisance." The other relevant restriction is in paragraph 18. It says, "No structure whatsoever except structures pursuant to a farming lease shall be erected, placed or permitted on any track, except one private resident, to be used only for occupancy as a dwelling by one family, only if necessary, for customary outfitters appertained to, appertained to, including a swimming pool and private stable for horses and sheep, and such stable shall conform to the architecture of residence, to which it is a person, and shall have the covered and rewarded." Just for the record, I don't think paragraph one really creates an impediment to Headwaters academy, because while neighbors may view this as a business or commercial purpose, it is a not-for-profit corporation, it's not make, it is not a business, it is no different kind of music institutes and other operations and churches and schools that raise money, make money, but all the money they make, the IRS considers it not a business. Why? Because they all go into furthering the not-for-profit purpose of the corporation. So personally, I will tell you, I don't think paragraph one stands as an impediment to establishment or the operation of the school on this property. The second one, I will acknowledge, is a little bit more challenging, because it says, "Every structure shall only be used for occupancy as a..." says, "Every structure shall only be used for occupancy as a dwelling by one family." No, I know, however, it's important to keep in mind, this, these restrictions that we're talking about, they come with all 16 of those lots, that once, because the question I showed you, nine through 16, and lots one through eight, which I didn't show. Okay, here's your zoning ordinance. And again, this was the subject of a lot of discussion at the Planning and Zoning Commission Public hearing. Your ordinance provides that this, this title, meaning the zoning ordinance, does not nullify any annexation agreement I highlighted, private agreement, or any other recorded covenant or restrictions on the land. Those private agreements, rules and covenants may be more restrictive than this title, but not less restrictive, otherwise the zoning ordinance, this title, could vote. And it was noted repeatedly that the village is not charged with enforcing the private covenant. So the point of this is, if there's a private covenant, there's a private covenant and it's more restrictive, the private covenant controls. If your zoning ordinance is more restrictive than the covenant, your zoning ordinance controls. So now I want to just get into real quickly, what does your zoning ordinance allow? So we said, we know that this property is in the R E district. What are, this is not a, these are not exhaustive list, an exhaustive set of lists. These are just the ones relevant for the project. What are permitted uses in the R E district? Obviously, single-family dwellings, community gardens, which you heard Sarah talk about, and farms. Those are permitted uses. You don't have to come before the village to get a special use to establish the uses on the property. What are authorized special uses? Alternative education services and elementary and other schools, which is live work and for you to see them. What are not permitted uses? Neither permitted uses nor authorized special uses, agricultural support services, crop or animal production, equine boarding facility, which means people can have horses on their properties in this subdivision, but under your zoning ordinance, and again, the declaration says you can have horses, but your zoning ordinance says you can have horses, but you can't be boarding other people's horses on your property. So the zoning ordinance is more restrictive than the government's. And you can't have a greenhouse or a nursery on the property, except as you'll see, within the context of the community garden. Here are the definitions of that. A greenhouse or a nursery is an establishment of flowers, shrubbery, vegetables, trees, other horticultural, floricultural products of property. Hand-sown, and may, and that's the key, it says hand-sown, which is why it's not a permitted or specialized, special, a product or special use in the R E district, but it may include gardening, landscape supplies, etc. A community garden is defined as the cultivation of fruit, flower, vegetable, ornamental plant by more than one person or family. Community gardens do not include the raising of livestock to be used as a charity. And your ordinance, the zoning ordinance, also has some special provisions that relate to community gardens. Community gardens are limited to the cultivation of herbs, fruits, flowers, vegetables, including the cultivation of village soil and the production cultivation of growing this housing, if any agricultural, horticultural, or agricultural, not only, may also include community gathering spaces for after-forth passive recreation, but playground equipment is prohibited. Greenhouses, as I said before, include, and have to, houses that are permitted to, to, to extend the growing season and access these stocks, and such as sheds, zines, and fur doors are also permitted. Now, your ordinance, the zoning ordinance, also says that, and I haven't, I didn't put this in the public, because your zoning, your zoning ordinance provisions on home-based businesses and other municipalities that call home operations. It goes on for like a page and a half, and I have those. I printed them, like the gun goes out, you, I have enough copies for you guys in the audience too. The zoning ordinance allows home-based businesses in the R E district, which is very common in most communities, obviously. But again, keep in mind that the declaration says, "No trap or structure located upon shall be used for any business or commercial purpose." So this is where it turns both ways, if you will. Even though your zoning ordinance allows people in this big subdivision to have online conditions or home businesses, the declaration does not. Finally, I think this is the last one. Finally, your ordinance does allow, you know, animals, aside horses. Horses obviously have a whole bunch of conditions that is in reference to another section there. But in the R E district, a home can have chickens, roosters, and other farm animals. That concludes our presentation. I appreciate you letting me run through all of that. And they're obviously available to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Anybody have questions for Mr. Frank? Anybody on the board? Okay.
When, when did Ms. Elliott's, is it her parents that purchased the property? When did they close on the property? And then, when did the neighbors become aware that a school was proposed on the property?
May.
Of 2025. And when did it first come to the village's attention that you were seeking some sort of a special use permit? So what is the reason for that delay? Because I think that's a, a pretty big concern that I have, is I wonder what, what is the reason for the delay? Because it seems to me, from what I've seen, so much took place during that time. You know, there was advertising, there was, I believe, a open house, there was students being signed up, there were teachers being hired, all these things. Why not come to us first? Why not come to us when the property was up for sale to say, this, you know, is this a possibility? Is this something that we, we can do? Why wait so long? Because that, that is very concerning to me.
Because at the time, when we were researching on the Hampton Hills webpage, under the zoning ordinance, the first zoning ordinance that was listed had R E two, schools were permitted with no special use. So when I first started, there was no, from confirming my, the property zoning and from reading the zoning ordinance on the internet provided by the village of Hampton Hills, there was no requirement. The zoning ordinance passed December 3rd. That old zoning ordinance finally got pulled down and then we were required. I wasn't aware when it passed on December 3rd that it was then a requirement. I was made aware by Jim Brown when he contacted me.
Okay, so you were under the impression, when you were going through the purchase process, that there would be absolutely no reason to go and seek any kind of zoning permission whatsoever on a million dollar property to get, you know, to see if there was any requirements?
I did reach out to Jim and confirmed the zoning and confirmed what the, what it was zoned. And then I read your zoning ordinance that said it was a, it was a permitted activity.
So did you seek a permit?
No, 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 you don't need a permit.
So did, in your opinion, it didn't require anything?
It didn't.
At all?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. So at, so at the point when you realized, are you?
My parents were going to move in, to be clear. They had every intent of moving in.
Okay, that was another question.
Yep.
So originally, they were going to move in. So what, what changed their mind? Why did they decide not to move in?
My dad's health.
Okay. And so at what point were you made aware then that this, that the zoning had changed? The zoning had, because I still, I guess I don't, I'm not familiar with?
When Jim Brown emailed me in May, I found out that I needed to have, he explained the process to me. He explained what the current zoning said and what we were required to do. And I literally took action immediately to do the process he explained to me, which was apply for a variance, go in special use, apply for special use, go in front of the zoning, like the process we are currently going through.
So is, I mean, I'm not familiar. Is anyone else familiar with, did the old zoning seriously allow someone to do a, to put a school into a residential area without any, requiring anything else?
I can answer that.
Yeah.
So the ordinance that the village adopted from Kane County, it was Kane County's ordinance, essentially, that we adopted, had schools as a permitted use. The village adopted an ordinance in January 2023. Schools were listed as a special use in residential zones in that ordinance. Both of those ordinances were up on our website at the time. So Ms. Elliott, what she said, you know, I'm not doubting the veracity of what she said, but the 2023 ordinance, which, which had, was passed in January, had schools as a special use already.
In 2023?
Yeah.
So it sounds to me like there would have been a, a requirement for her to seek a special use permit, correct? Is this a misunderstanding?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm not clear on this, that, that there, that you were able to go ahead and start this school with no other requirements whatsoever. I'm, I'm not aware of, I mean, it sounds to me like, I know we've, we've had, I know we had the Kane County sort of rules in place, and I know we had another ordinance passed, and then we've had another revision done, this in 2025, but I don't, I'd have to see this for myself. I'm confused by that.
Well, if I understand correctly, you did not say that both ordinances were on your website?
They were, yeah.
So I don't, Sarah?
I put it on the one on top, the very first one listed.
Kane County's zoning ordinance, which I identified as a permitted use of, you know, in the residential district, is on your website. So was your other?
Okay. And is that the standard we are held to? That if, if something is inappropriately left on a website?
It's answering your questions, but why would somebody perceive, thinking they don't do a special use plan, start advertising and doing all these things? Why would they do that? Why? Because on your website, there's a 40%.
It's a huge.
But the 2023 ordinance was effective and enforced at that point in time. There's no dispute of that.
No dispute about that, that's what Mr. Brown said. But he said, unfortunately, both of them are on your website, but it's possible someone like Sarah could click on one and think that's the answer.
This is a.
Would it help with hiring an attorney?
This is a huge investment. It's a, it's also, it's also something that, I don't know, it, it just seems to me, I, I don't quite understand the delay. And I think this, I, I see what you're saying, but I still have a hard time understanding that. It's a huge investment. You're going into a community with a, a situation that obviously now has turned into a very contentious situation, and it seems to me that that might have been avoided had some of this been handled differently. So I am, I have, and I have a concern about that and maybe not taking better steps here because it makes me concerned about the future and whether or not you will, you know, take the ordinances and the rules seriously. I'm just going to be honest about that.
Okay. Anybody else? Any questions for Mr. Frank or? Oh, Nick, go ahead.
Are we opening this up to questions for Sarah, just generally? Or do we want to finish public comment? Because I, I've got a list of questions. Are we doing that now? Are we progressing through public comment?
Yeah.
Okay. I had some questions for you, Sarah. I was curious about the certifications for the school. At the end of eighth grade, are you going to be issuing diplomas to the students?
We are working on getting accredited with ISB. It takes a multiple year process. So I don't know if year one, we can officially issue a diploma for eighth grade, but, but that is the trajectory.
Okay, so the Illinois Department of Education is not?
It's Illinois State Board of Education, ISB, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Illinois State Board of Education is the authority there, yes.
Okay.
And we, they're aware of our, you know, we've, we've already reached out to them to get started in the process, but this has come first.
Okay. Parking, I have seen the driveway and the auxiliary paved areas in front of the barn. Typically for, can you just walk me through how you're going to organize parking? Because potentially, your engineer talked about a study that your driveway could handle 15 vehicles. It looks like there could be six faculty, three every day, but then don't you have music, art, and some faculty that would be coming in and out?
Yes.
Administration board?
There's, there's room to park and for accessible parking would go in front of the garage. There are three spaces there. We would, we would ask teachers to leave those open. Obviously, if one is accessible, no one's parking there unless they have a handicap placard. There's, that space behind would be parking for staff and teachers. There's, there's a gate that you would need to drive the little drive and then park on the blacktop. We don't have it labeled into parking spaces, but it could definitely fit six cars, if not nine.
Okay. As far as the flow of traffic in that engineer's study?
Yes.
When I was looking at it, it seems like 15 cars, like stacked, parked, all not moving, could fit in there. How, how, that's what it looked like to me. How do 15 cars circulate through this?
I think that would be it for not drop off, but pickup was the, as parents arrived, they would do almost the whole loop. And then students would be walked across the yard to start getting into cars that are already pulled forward so that that first student's family can leave as soon as that gets there and then things start moving forward.
Okay, so it's kind of, it's going to be a valet. I mean, you've got to kind of really manage vehicles and train.
Yeah, yeah.
And what are you thinking with 40 students, 45? What's the vehicle count for 45 students?
Right now, with 18 students, it's something around 10 actual cars between siblings and carpooling. So if I'm doubling it, that would be around 20 cars for 30, not, what am I, 18 and 18? 36 students. And then if we're adding 10 more students, that puts us at about 25 cars. So I understand you can't stack 25 cars, but that's where we had offered a staggered pickup time or a staggered drop off time. So as, if, if all students are let out at, at 3:15 and everyone comes then, I can see what you're saying, that you would stack up all those cars, though they have until 3:30 to get there. And I know not all parents will arrive at 3:15, speaking from experience. But if we have a break, a grade breakdown where it's middle grades are getting picked up at 3:15 and elementary grades are getting picked up at 3:30, that would also divide the groups in half, minus we would work out those sibling, you know, families that have one in each to, to find the right time for them. But we would divide it so it was half and half came at sta, at staggered times.
Yeah, that's helpful.
And if I can just, that's why I, we suggested we would come back to and make sure that it's working properly before going above 25.
Yes, like a look back a year from.
Perfect. Is the enrollment going to be open to children with disabilities?
We have a number of kids with documented disabilities already enrolled.
Okay.
Yep.
So the building and the entrance, parking, entrance, egress, facilities?
The ADA, the ADA compliance?
Yeah.
I currently don't have any wheelchair users enrolled. I have other types of disabled children. Our ability to accommodate, like, we have to meet requirements, we're probably, that's like another hurdle to tackle, like, and we are, we will be in full compliance of ADA before we would open. I haven't had time yet for our build out of a plan because this has taken priority.
Sure. And then fire district approval?
Yep, yep. We've been in contact with them since December. We've had them out several times to assess and tell us what we need. It's been a little bit of a moving target for what they first told us we would need and then what they have come back and said we'll need. But we're going to, we will do whatever compliance steps, including installing sprinklers and all the appropriate signage. We had a company, we have a company already that we have a bid from, so.
Do they give you any sort of occupancy limitations?
They did already give us some. I would have to look before I spoke to them, but it's something like 75. It's like, it's wildly higher than the numbers we're talking about. And that would not be our, it's like this room is occupancy for 75 people.
Got it.
So.
Can you talk about the 12 fundraisers?
Oh, it's not 12 fundraisers. There'd be, it'd be like.
Did that change on the update?
It would be like fundraisers, back to school night. It would be like fundraisers, back-to-school night, parent education nights, student performance nights. We want to be able to host those types of events after school hours throughout the school year. So I estimated one per month was probably what would fit us well and also hopefully work with what the needs here are.
So those being outdoors in the evenings could definitely impact the neighbors. What do these events kind of look like? Are they indoors or are they outdoors?
I don't think, I mean, having lived in that neighborhood for as long as I have, I don't think it's going to be a negative impact of volume. I've heard plenty of parties at night that go on till midnight, whatever, and I, I haven't seen it as an inconvenience. We're agreeing to stop by 10 o'clock. We're not talking about rock concerts. We're talking about being able to fundraise so that we can keep our doors open. It might be a silent raffle. It might be a dinner, you know, a ticketed dinner. But it would be with the nature and in full compliance and anything, you know, any of our zoning or noise ordinance, any of that.
And then I noticed on the update, you are already saying that there won't be any third-party events?
No.
None of that will occur. All right, thank you. That was all my questions.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Frank?
I just had a question, I guess, for Attorney Frank and maybe even for our attorney on the one-year timeframe, if it gets approved based on conditions. Does that include the issue with the covenants? If I'm speaking out of turn here, somebody could just slap me and tell me to shut up, but does that include resolving the covenants issue with the neighborhood, the one-year timeframe?
They would be separate, but I can answer yes. In other words, not only within one year would the condition have to be satisfied by the party, but also whatever issues arise, if they do arise over the covenants, would have to be resolved before the specialty's lapse, 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 cease.
So basically, all the issues, and I don't want to sound negative about it, but I, I think the school fits the village like a glove. It's really unfortunate that it's on this property because I think the property is challenged. But I don't think anybody would argue the point that this is a school that you'd want if it was anywhere but here, I mean, at least as far as the neighbors are concerned. But, you know, to me, there's a lot of challenges with the property, and I think Trustee Beltner, you know, pointed some of them out, and there's only a year timeframe, and we all know how legal matters drag on. So that, I guess that's a bit concerning, too, that we can all be putting in an awful lot of work and have the one-year expire and it just dies anyway.
Well, and I appreciate that. I think, as you said, I think you can at least work out something that takes into account that possibility. In other words, if there was an ordinance on the table to approve this special use, it could be a provision that says, like, you know, and the division always has a right to re-approach you, extend that date. You can say no, or you can also say yes. And so is it beyond the realm of possibility that the division or something over the covenants and therefore is not able to open within one year and you come back and say, could you extend it? It's not in our control. Could you extend it under the rule that's possible?
Okay, we, ready to move on and go to public comment? Mr. Frank, I'm going to ask you to just move your stand up a little bit when people want to use the restroom. It's, they're climbing under the, the wire, so, thank you. Okay, and then I ask the public, whoever wants to speak, to please be respectful and try not to be repetitive, you know, try to talk about the issues and not be too repetitive when you come up, or the next person that comes up. Chief, did you ever want to say anything? No?
No.
Okay.
I mean, everyone has strong opinions on this, so they're all, well-respected, and that's the reason everyone's here, to stress, you know what they want to say on it, please be respectful. Like, you know, there's nothing consulting, nothing derogatory towards it. I completely understand it. I just don't want anything personal in nature on either side, so that's obvious.
I should just mention one thing.
Sure.
Just prior to tonight's meeting, the village did receive a copy of, of a correspondence from the nearby property owners regarding a written protest by the property owners. It will be distributed to the board. I just received it as I was walking in this evening, and I believe a copy will also be, or maybe already has been delivered to the applicant pursuant to the Illinois Municipal Code, if a certain percentage of the adjoining property owners do file a written protest and sign the written protest, deliver it to both the applicant and the village, any positive action on behalf of the village to approve the special use, whether with conditions or not, would require a two-thirds vote of the village board. So I just want you to have that in mind. It's not relevant for this evening's discussion because there's no action tonight, but when it does come to action, it would require two-thirds, for a minute, two, two-thirds of tho, two-thirds of the village board. Yeah.
Okay, we'll move on to public comment. First person want to step up to the podium? Anybody want to speak tonight? Seeing none? Anybody?
I think there are some people.
Okay. I don't think we have a sign-up sheet, yeah. Go ahead.
Hi.
Please state your name and your address.
Sure. I am Kazim Koutab, K-A-Z-I-M-Q-U-T-A-B, 1331 North 14th Street, DeKalb, 60115. I'm one of the two hired instructors. I just want to clarify, if it's any peace of mind regarding school events, I know we, fundraisers were mentioned for keeping us afloat. I actually just had a conversation with my colleague, the other instructor, about events throughout the year, and we're trying, for the sake of families, actually, to keep them really during the daytime as much as possible, even within the school day, when it comes to, you know, science fairs, plays, things like that, so that kids could get picked up in a normal afternoon time. So, we really are aiming, we have, we have kids as young as five years old, we're not naming for any night events when it comes to those kind of things. So, the large overestimation, I think that we're trying to play safe here with 12 events a year. I think that we want to take that into account, that most of this would be daytime stuff. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to come up and say a few words, or their concerns or questions? Okay, hearing none? Go ahead, Carmen.
So I think as far as further direction for, well, for myself, but also for Mr. Brown, would be that if, if the village board has any consideration for, for approving this special use, what, if any, conditions would be placed on it? Because that would be helpful to have that beforehand if the matter does appear on the agenda for approval with the ordinance. So certainly if you'd like to discuss that tonight, or if you'd like to, you know, provide that information to myself, I can get it to, to Mr. Brown, because we'd have to have that available for the, for the, that village board meeting. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, it would appear on an agenda earlier than the 16th of September. The applicant asked, was not able to be here on the 2nd of September, so that's when it would be available, and we would prepare. You have the findings of fact that have the proposed conditions that were also discussed by counsel for the applicant tonight, so that is a good basis for conditions that they brought forth. If you had any further, I know, feel free.
Okay. Anybody else? Any other comments? Nick, just quickly, yeah?
Sure. I would have some suggestions for a conditional approval, just to get them out there now while we're all together. Is this the, this is what you're asking? Let's go through them right now?
Yeah, if you have anything in addition to what the applicant's provided tonight, then we can discuss it with the board tonight. Sure.
Yeah, so I think the parking, I think we need to have the parking locked down for business like this, strip lots, handicap accessible parking. I would like to see that as a condition, that everything is marked out, handicap spaces. We need to ensure that with 45 vehicles, one of the conditions that an engineer would verify that there can be a flow of traffic in this driveway, so that 20, whatever the vehicle count ends up being, that there is a reasonable flow of traffic and some sort of a plan to keep vehicles-
-fit the building.
I think that's similar to what a person would expect a family to potentially have. I think that this property should do its best to mimic a residential home. Another thing with this, nobody's going to be living here. So this is, it's a residential property, but it's, but it's not anymore. I mean, it's zoned residential, but nobody will be living here. No outdoor speakers or lighting for any evening events. Again, minimal impact on the residents. No third-party events, they've already agreed to that, so of course, the entire list. I would put a condition to max 45 student enrollment. I don't know if they committed to 45 in theirs, or if they anticipated 45. I would put a maximum enrollment of 45. Condition also, the driveway signage and no parking or standing ever out on Hampton Hills Road. And that would conclude the list that would make me comfortable with this potentially as a conditional approval.
Okay. Thank you, Nick. All right, oh, go, go ahead, go ahead, Janet.
I agree with all of that, and I appreciate the, the work that the applicant has already done to try and address some of the concerns that I think have arisen out of all of this. For me personally, 45 students is a lot, and I'm not sure what the right number is, but 45 seems like a lot, no matter what other conditions are satisfied. I also wonder, because someone asked me earlier, well, if I, you know, if I, if I walk up to this, is it, is it, is this a public place now? If I walk up to the school, I drive up and I want to come in and see whether it's a good place for my child to go, can I do that? And I said, well, I don't know, I guess you could, but then it occurred to me, you can't actually just walk into most schools, right? So there's a security aspect that you're going to be addressing also. Is that correct? Yeah, I, because I think that would be important. Those are the only additional things I have.
Trace, go ahead.
See, the other issue that I didn't bring up, because I know it's been addressed, but I do want to mention it now, we are talking about sort of conditions, is the, the whole water situation and the, the Mill Creek running through the property, the underground old tiles running through the property. Now, there would have to be a, I would think, some sort of significant study done on this property. I think I've seen some maps, and I am no expert in this, but I've seen maps that show that this is a very delicate area, and these are old tiles underneath this property, and so, you know, it-